I'll please rise for the prayer. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make a decision which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Now for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Milonazza.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Mayor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Cirillo.
Here.
As nine present.
Thank you. Do we have any moments of silence, Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I request a moment of silence in darkened chambers for James P. Cassidy, Jr. of Moody Point, Maine, Naples, Florida, Westphal, and Lowell. He died unexpectedly on September 19th, 2018, after a short illness. He is survived by his wife of over 50 years, Mary Jo Mailey, sons Trey, Matt, and Tim, and their wives Barney, Sherry, and Becky, three beloved grandchildren, Paige Bridgett and Ryan, his sisters Patricia Peckewich and Mary Conway, and their husbands Chet and David. His younger brother Jackson predeceased him. Jim was born on November 17th, 1941, in Lowell, Mass. He attended Lowell Public Schools, graduated from Hebron Academy in the Oxford Hills of Maine and the University of Pennsylvania. Following in his father's footsteps, he earned his law degree from Boston University. He proudly served clients from Lowell and beyond for more than 40 years. He built a practice and reputation based on his willingness to take on any challenge, listen to people, and help them to find path through sometimes difficult situations. He lived a long and fulfilling life. He worked hard and he played hard, building friendships around shared adventures on sailboats, golf courses, beaches, and work. His strongest friendship, though, was with Mary Jo, with whom he shared the thrills and the spills of parenthood, homeownership, and a love for New England, the Patriots and the Red Sox. Jim Cassidy will be greatly missed by his family and his many friends. May his soul rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Virginia Vio, 85, beloved wife of Richard P. Vio, mother of Christina L. Page, who's a City of Lowell employee. She passed away Sunday morning at her home in Belvedere. Surviving Virginia, in addition to her husband Richard, are her daughters Lisa M. Marquis, her husband Albert, Christina L. Page, and her husband Mark, their grandchildren Sarah M. Marquis, Catherine Page, James Marquis, and Andrew Page, her sister Barbara Toman, and many nieces and nephews. Virginia was also the sister-in-law, was the sister-in-law of David Vio and his wife Pauline, and the late George and Teresa Vio. She'll be sadly missed.
Any further other announcements? I would please back in the chamber. It's not 7:00 o'clock yet for the general public hearings. We're going to go to communications from the city manager. I'd like to take two out of order. Mr. Kennedy, make a motion for...
Move to take those items out of order.
CND. All right, motion by Mr. Kennedy to take out of order. CND, a second by Mr. Elliott. Increase in charter school cap. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council, the report in the packet is a response to the motion filed by Counselor Kennedy, and we did obtain an extensive report from the Lowell School Department, and Paul Schlickman, who is the coordinator of research, testing, and assessment, is present and to answer any questions that the council may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Kennedy.
I had a conversation with Mr. Schlickman earlier, and so I'm all set. I think it's a very good report. It's a very comprehensive report, and I'm satisfied. So I don't have any further questions at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? We've gotten that. Thank you. Next, the voting process and functions of municipal government. Another motion by Mr. Kennedy. Madam Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Manager. And again, this motion requested that we seek in response and input from the Lowell School Department, and again, in the packet, there is a report both having to do with civic education and the like in the Lowell Public Schools as well as in adult education. And we have representatives here to answer questions as well. Superintendent Janine Durkin is here, as well as Paul Schlickman and the head of school, Ms. Bastide.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. As you recall, because I believe you were at the meeting, this motion came as a result of a discussion at one of the ad hoc committee meetings a couple of months ago, when it was suggested that maybe it would be a good idea for, since a lot of people that graduate from Lowell High School remain in the city, that it might be a good idea to have a mini course at Lowell High School that would just describe just how the government in Lowell works, and so, and also register people to vote, so that seniors at Lowell High School would be registered to vote by the, when they graduate. And I read the report, and I understand that there's a course that includes part of that during the junior year, I guess, but I would just, if there's no objection, I'd just like to refer this to the mayor's office, just to see if you can come up with something a little bit better. I really do think that the senior year is better for this, for what we have in mind, but maybe the curriculum is such that we can't accommodate that. But at the very least, there should be some organized effort to make sure that Lowell High School students are registered to vote by the time they leave the high school, if they're of age.
I think, recall, doing some recalling regarding that meeting, we were concerned that many of the younger people especially did not understand the Plan E form of government. And I think, Madam Superintendent, what we're perhaps looking for was some type of program that we could offer during the opening period of the homeroom period. In the past, we've utilized, I know it's a contractual thing with teachers, but if we were to give a prepared program in which they could watch, this is the voting process in Lowell, there are nine counselors, you know, seven school committee people, this would be a great help. And I think all of us as councils and school committee could possibly commit to doing something, but it would perhaps be something we'd work with either TV studio or LTC. This is not to put a burden on the school department, but the thing is, when all of us have gone out to discuss if there should be a change in how we vote for our councils or our school committee people, there's a lot of confusion as to what we have to do anyways. And then if you talk to a lot of people, it's hard for them to distinguish between a state representative and a city counselor. It's as simple as that. So the thing is, this is something what we're looking for was to use the high school as a starting point to provide information without overburdening the high school. We know, you know, you're set in your programs, but there are other alternatives, if that's okay, if you understand that, Madam Superintendent. You want to discuss that at all?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I had Robert DeLosa, who is our history department chair, that he prepared what we currently have available. I know that, I think today, he was working with students on their voting, and we had some information that he was going to be providing to the Lowell Sun. But if there, we certainly can look at something for all students in the advisory period. We wanted you to know what specifically we are doing as part of the curriculum, and if you want some specifics from Mr. DeLosa, we could certainly have him share a little bit of what's been going on in the last few months at Lowell High School.
Sorry, Mr. Kennedy, do you want to hear that information, or are you all set?
Well, I guess I think this, just to kind of shorten the discussion, I mean, part of the impetus for this that came out of the subcommittee meeting was because we do have a lot of minorities that go to the high school. And while some of us probably take the process for granted and we know how it all works, that's not true for everybody. But the idea was that, at the meeting, was that if we could get the high school seniors registered to vote, that they might bring that home to their households, and that might increase registration and voter participation more than just voter registration. So that was the idea of it. So if there's no objection, I would just like to make a motion that it be referred back to you and that you work with the school department to see if we can come up with something that's a little bit better.
A second for that motion. By Mr. Conway, a second by Mr. Conway. Any questions? Ms. Cirillo, do you have any question? Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll go back to, A, status of the marijuana license. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you to the council, there is a report in the packet. This was in response to a motion by Counselor Elliott requesting the status. The report gives an update as to the status, including where we stand vis-à-vis the number of companies that we've been in discussion with, which to date is eight as far as retail companies. There's also a report regarding Patriot Care, which is an existing cultivation and medical marijuana facility in Lowell, who has also applied for a retail facility and was granted permission for the retail facility on September 6th of this year by the Cannabis Control Commission. So that's the only one that has been, whose license has been approved so far by the Cannabis Control Commission. As to the other companies that have expressed an interest, there is a working group that has been evaluating each application and each request, scoring and waiting, including doing site visits to each location, and will be coming up with a final scoring and recommendation in the near future. But Mr. Slagel is here, if there are any questions.
Question. Counselor Elliott.
Thank you for the report. I'm glad I filed the motion to get an update. I have to say, I was surprised to learn that one had already been issued. I know a motion had been filed here to set up a subcommittee. I know, Mr. Mayor, you spoke to me that that is going to be forthcoming. You know, just considering this is uncharted territory, I knew there was a cultivation already in the city for medical marijuana, but I would like to be kept abreast on, you know, on where and locations. We've had lots of discussion on this, and I know it's uncharted territory, but I do think it's important that we stay on top of this. This report is good, Madam Manager. My question is, moving forward, there is one note in here that we did not, as a council, set a limit. We did set a limit on retail. We did not set a limit on cultivation, and I'm a little concerned about that, quite frankly. If the council, we don't have to approve these, these are going to be all approved through an agreement signed by you, Madam Manager. So is that how the statute is set up? And look, I just want to be kept abreast and that these be fully vetted, certainly through the council and through your office, and there's a work group set up. So I'd like to get a little bit more information. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, when you're going to make the appointments to the subcommittee, but I do think it's important to me to have discussions and meetings on exactly what's taking place, where they're going, what the criteria is that this work group is using.
Yeah, the, thank you, through you. With regard to Patriot Care, under the statute, there is a priority given to those existing medical facility licenses. Mr. Slagel can address that. So that's in a category separate and apart from the other applications under the law. And so Patriot Care already existed here, and so they had a priority under the Cannabis Control Commission regulations, so. But as to all of the others, those are in the process of being looked at. And we're happy to discuss the same with the subcommittee in terms of where we're at. There's been no decision made on any other facility, simply a vetting of each application. And then, of course, those applications will get vetted at the state level by the Cannabis Control Commission. I don't know if you have anything to add, Mr. Slagel.
No, I don't think so. I think you vary succinctly, put it together.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Manager, could we get a copy of what this host community agreement, you know, looks like? Because it'll have to be executed with each other applicants, up to the maximum of five. And again, I think that we should have a discussion on if, on limiting the number of cultivation.
Yeah, I think we haven't entered into any host community agreement other than Patriot, because they had an existing host community agreement with the city. We can get you a copy. I thought we did provide a copy of Patriot. We'll give you a copy of Patriot, but that's the only one. And as far as cultivation, we're certainly more than willing to discuss that. Those are treated differently under the statute, under the law, because there's a minimum amount that the state requires, and that number is five, including Patriot for the City of Lowell, but not so with cultivation. But we certainly are interested in having a broader discussion with the council.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. Next is Branch Street. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought the report was very detailed or comprehensive. The reports clearly indicated, which I knew it already, that, you know, the Branch Street area is very high-traffic area, both for pedestrian and vehicle. And the author report indicated, you know, there's a number of steps we need to do, and some step costs heavily than other. I would urge, through you, to the manager, I would urge you, Madam Managers, to work on those that doesn't cost too much, and the rest may be put into the capital plans. Those that doesn't cost too much is crosswalk painting, sign inventory sort of, and the rest, I would say, that, you know, put on the capital plan, maybe put on a fast speed if need be, because we've done something similar to this on Copper Square, on Bridge Streets, and maybe this will be the next place to do. So I thank you for the report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Elliott.
I just wanted to follow up. It was, I believe before you came, Madam Manager, I had filed a motion of somewhat similar nature. One of the items was a number of business owners would like to have trash barrels put there to, you know, to keep the corridor clean, and there are none there. I know the city will probably have to empty them, but I think it's worthy of trying to, you know, keep the place clean, and I know some of them have put out barrels. So can we look into that and see if that's something we can do in addition to a lot of these, you know, street improvements that, you know, I, it's a business corridor that is expanding, that brings in taxes, commercial taxes, and it's important. So I think this is a good report, and it's a central location that is really going to expand our central business district, and these improvements will make a marked difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Milonazza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. Would this type of project be eligible under the Community Development Block Grant Program, the CDBG program?
Yes, it would be, and that's something we would look to explore. I'm looking over to the far corner. We would explore that as an opportunity, as Counselor Noon mentioned, you know, Bridge Street, other areas of the city had had significant upgrades, and so we would need other monies or in a capital plan.
Right, okay.
I just wanted to point out, and I know Natasha Vance, our traffic engineer, is here, and, you know, there's things like crossing lights that are mentioned in this report and another one that's coming up, $20,000 to $30,000. But there's also some shorter money opportunities, and she may want to address that as well in terms of a crossing light, which we will explore. That's more in the line of $2,000 to $3,000. So we're trying to explore every opportunity to address the safety needs on a more timely basis than waiting for CDBG monies or capital plans. So I don't know whether you can address that, Natasha? I think you attached copies of the potential light systems to the report.
Yep, yes, Natasha Vance, traffic engineer. Yeah, the attachment is, it's a fairly new product, but it's significantly less expensive than hardwired flashing beacons because it's solar, it has a battery, and it has a three-year warranty. It just recently got Mastod approval, like, as in last week, and it is MUTCD compliant. The company has actually offered to provide one set to the city on a trial basis to see if it's something that we're interested in, and we're going to figure out where is a good place to install that and see if it's a good option. But it does seem like it could be a much more affordable option than a traditional hardwired flashing light.
And it works on sensor. If an individual is standing, waiting to cross, then the flashing starts based on sensor. So we're exploring all options with this new product and potential pilot use of it to see if it is functional for our areas that need crossing lights.
Counselor Elliott, Counselor Leahy.
I just wanted to mention briefly that the city did, I did attend a meeting with Counselor Noon that was sponsored for the business owners in the Branch Street neighborhood, and they were enthusiastic, I thought they were, the city presented good information on funding available and sort of streetscape improvements that will make the neighborhood look much nicer. And I felt there was some enthusiasm with the business owners to take advantage of that, to invest in, not only to invest, but knowing that the city's going to make some improvements. So it was, you know, kudos to the economic development staff.
Counselor Lee.
Thank you. Through you to the manager. How much does it cost for those raised crosswalks? Have we looked at that?
Natasha. Generally speaking, DPW and the fire department are not big fans of the raised crosswalks because they can cause the vehicles to bottom out. There are places where it might be an appropriate application, and basically, there are only, those are the two things that make crosswalks visible to vehicles, is to be elevated or to have a flashing light. And this particular product works based on, as the manager said, when a pedestrian actually gets to the crosswalk, it starts flashing because it detects the person there, because one of the problems is 50% of the time pedestrians don't push the button to make the light start flashing. So that's definitely something we could look at. It's not necessarily something that's going to be applicable or appropriate in every road in the city, and we would need to, you know, talk to the fire department about it and make sure they were okay with, in terms of where their fire stations are located and where they typically, the corridors they typically use.
Okay. So width-wise, though, like, maybe five feet wide, right? Those are what he's talking about.
Well, ideally, crosswalks would be eight feet wide for ADA accessibility and so that two people with mobility issues could cross, and then you would have the ramps leading up to them that need to be at a fairly shallow grade so that vehicles don't bottom out. So it can be a pretty significant cross-section.
All right. Because I'm working out in Turksburg, at the Fields on Livingston Road. Are you familiar with those out there? So those are only about four feet wide. But those are legal, then, maybe, you're saying?
They should probably be wider. I don't want to say that they're not not, that they're illegal necessarily, but we would typically specify a six or eight-foot width crosswalk.
Right. I just thought that would work, maybe, in that area, because they're high, you've got to slow down.
Mm-hmm. They, and they are a good solution in a lot of places, absolutely.
Yeah. Could we investigate that around Branch Street? I mean, we have the-
Of course, yeah.
-firehouse there, but I don't know how fast they can actually leave the firehouse.
We, we can investigate with, with the Fire Department and DPW. My understanding is it can be a challenge for plows as well, but we'll, we'll look at all aspects.
But they're so wide, the plows go right over them. It shouldn't be an issue with the plows at all, but-
We'll examine that, yes.
Okay.
I'll look into that, yeah.
All set? Thank you. Any further? All right, next we have the reliability of electrical infrastructure. Council Lee?
Um, which one are we on now?
E.
Oh, that one, yeah. Um, the report really didn't say anything. So there's a problem over in that neighborhood. I don't know why they can't find out. So could we go back to them and-
Yeah, but, so, so the motion was talking about problem areas. Are you, which area are you referring to, Counselor? One of the questions we have-
Specifically, like Lou Street and Ridge Road. And they're always the last ones to go on.
Yeah.
Everybody on the streets buying generators. A few years ago, maybe when you were on the council, we had an issue in the Highlands, maybe? It was a section over by maybe the golf course, and it ended up being something over there was going wrong, and they ended up fixing that. So I'm wondering if it's not the same problem over here.
We'll, we'll ask National Grid to, to address Lou Street area in particular.
And I did speak with Susan Griffin specifically, and gave her all the information. And they said they were going to take a look at-
Okay.
Their-
We'll follow up. The, the, the report was talking about the facilities and the upgrading of their infrastructure in the city, both what they've done and what they plan to do in the next two years. One in particular, having to do with the, the station that, that services Lowell General, that is much needed. And so that's expected to be done in the 2019 timeframe, as well as 2020. And that, that's the Boulevard Street substation. But, so we included with, with their report where they're making investments. It's about $50 million.
Sure. All right. Okay. When I had asked for the report, too, I thought I had mentioned Lou Street specifically. I appreciate the other update stuff, but I was kind of looking for problems in neighborhoods where the power goes out frequently and doesn't come back on. So we'll just follow up with that.
All set?
Thank you. Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next, we go to the 15-minute pocket space at 178 University Ave, revised by Council Elliot. Any questions?
Motion's already been addressed. Thank you. The business owner is very happy. New business owner.
Uh, next is Potucket Street, Council Kennedy. All set? All right. Next, we go into informational reports. New Building Commissioner, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a notice in the packet that we have hired a new Building Commissioner, Mr. David Fuller, who I believe is present this evening, to say, let me just introduce Mr. Fuller to, to the council. Many of you know him. Mr. Fuller was a building inspector here in the city previously, but most recently was the Building Commissioner in the town of Ipswich, Massachusetts. So welcome home, Mr. Fuller.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Looking forward to the challenges.
And we'll give you a break. We won't ask any questions tonight about any specific properties.
Just getting up to date. I appreciate that. Wait till the next meeting, though. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, next is the Lawrence Street Bridge Project. Madam Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this report and update is from our city engineer, Christine Clancy, who can address this. Obviously, this has been a, an issue for many, many people trying to get across the Lawrence Street Bridge, wanting to know what the, where we go from here. We did have a meeting with National Grid about this and other issues, and Christine can address this.
Sure. So as everyone received the, the update, so the Lawrence Street Bridge was originally anticipated to be completed this fall. We, as we neared completion, or neared the final stages of the bridge installation, we identified a gas relocation that was unknown at the time. The alignment was differing, differed from where we, where it was anticipated. So this, this process began in June. We started communicating with National Grid, looking at solutions. And as this process has evolved over time, and also given the recent events that happened in Lawrence and Dover, they, they are, they focused their crews with that effort, and also they have the lockout. They are focused with efforts for repairs right now. They also, though, given the, this complexity of this relocation, is not an easy relocation. It's a high-pressure gas line, and where they want to relocate it is closer towards the roadway, so they have to look at the stability of the roadway. So the, the next steps are to work with National Grid, we're meeting with them on a weekly basis, to look at, to come up with a solution to relocate the gas main. But we also know that the, we want to reopen the traffic to, right now it's alternating, alternating traffic. So what the plan is to more immediately reopen the lanes to two traffic, when, so that will be done within the next month. And then, so that will be through the winter, there'll be two lanes of traffic as originally, before construction occurred. We will come back, National Grid will come back in the spring to do the relocation, and we will, we will do the final work in the spring. So the long-term project will continue to the summer of 2019, but the traffic will be reinstated to two-lane traffic this winter, by the end of this month, or by, by the end of October.
Council Lee?
Thank you. Just, so the question that everybody's asking is, did they know they were going to redesign this anyways, and why wasn't the work done?
Right. That's a good question. So this was a, I would call a differing site condition, is that we didn't know that the, the gas turned in towards the center of the roadway. The gas alignment, as it was painted in the street, and per records, was more on the north side of the bridge, closer towards the embankment. But when we went to go do the, install a moment slab for the, the bridge slab, and also the BR2, the rail that is part of that slab that one pour, we realized that location, the high-pressure gas line was in direct conflict with, with the, with our pour. So that, that relocation was not known before this past June. And so we started coordinating in June this summer.
That's the thing I don't get, is how long have they been working on this bridge for? And nobody looked at that? They've been over there for two years, and all of a sudden it's an issue?
We hadn't excavated that particular location until that time that we discovered the need for the relocation.
From National Grid?
We, that, the, the location where we were going to pour the slab, we hadn't, we hadn't excavated prior to May or June of this past year, and then identified that relocation need. Does that answer your question?
No, not really. It just, it sounds like National Grid doesn't know where their pipes are.
I mean, there's records, but they did not know that the line bend had, had that alignment. That was, I mean, it was, and when we do DigSafe, we-
It's just funny, because we've got a thing here, talking about safety, and they don't even know where their lines are. I mean-
Right. So there's another handout that was just provided tonight, and that was this, a notification that was provided from National Grid, just talking about the Columbia gas incident in Andover and Lawrence, and just assuring that there, you know, everyone's aware of the situation. It is really going to change the gas industries in terms of public safety and safety measures. But in terms of the system that they have in, what this letter says is the system that we have in Lowell, that there, there's no, there's no threat to what happened in Andover or Lawrence, as to what's with our system that we have right now.
All right. It just seems funny that they're talking about safety, and they don't even know where their lines are, because we've been working on this bridge, and it's not your fault or any of ours, but they've been working on this for two years, and all of a sudden, at the end, nobody knows where the gas lines are. And it's going to end up costing us more money in the spring. It just seems kind of ridiculous that they talk about safety, and they don't even know where the lines are. So, thank you.
Okay. Council Elliot and Council Kennedy?
So my question is, this is a design failure, meaning whoever designed the bridge, I mean, this report indicates that they were about to pour the final slab, and then lo and behold, a gas line appears. So is this going to be a change order, that the city is going to be responsible? Because in my opinion, this is a design flaw, and whoever did the design, and quite frankly, even the contractor or DigSafe, didn't identify this gas line till the last slab is going to be poured. Is this, are we saying, who's the bridge contractor or designer?
Uh, the contractor's MAS. This is a city project, but TEC's also designer. As, as far as, I guess I would call it a more differing site condition, and not a design failure in that the gas was, I mean, we were, we knew we were close to the gas, but we were set, we were, we had the enough space to pour this, this slab. The gas took a bend in more towards the center of the road. And so in terms of markouts and records, there's, I mean, that information's great for designing, but it was not, I guess, at this, at this location, we did not anticipate this. It was really a bend in the line that we didn't anticipate. As far as costs, that was one other one of your questions, is yet this is additional cost to, to demobilize the crew, to go back to the two-way, to the, the two-way traffic, and then come back in the spring to finish the project.
I mean, this is significant, I mean, you know, to demobilize and remobilize, this is significant, and this is, this is not a state bridge. This is, we own this bridge. So do we have any legal stance? I, I would argue that we do, that this is why we hire an engineer to design, design as built, to make sure that we don't run into these complications? So through you, Mr. Mayor, the manager?
Through you. You know, this was a question that I raised, and it's something we're going to look at. I think it's, it's two things, that the cost is approximately $50,000 to demobilize and then mobilize again. And then there may be, but, but it's in that ballpark in terms of the cost. So we're certainly going to examine what our rights are. The other thing that I think Christine Clancy mentioned is, in addition to the, the line taking a bend that was unforeseen until they excavated, we also had the incident of, in, in Lawrence and North Andover and Andover, which has since caused National Grid to reexamine each future capital project, including bridges, including this bridge, where they're dealing with high-pressure lines. And so as a result of that, they did tell us that it will require some redesign on their part, because there is a low pressure as well as a high-pressure line on this bridge. So, I mean, that's just, that's not going to impact us going forward in the spring. It's just something else that's happening at the same time.
So will they absorb part of this, you know, because it was, it needs to be redesigned, according to the specs, which I agree. Are they willing to cost share in this?
We haven't had those discussions, but we will look at all our options. We, when we had this discussion the other day, we're, we're certainly going to examine all our options.
Okay.
And we are meeting with National Grid weekly, which I think is helpful to move forward some of these projects, to understand what they're doing in the city. And at least for the foreseeable future, we'll continue those meetings.
Just to reassure the neighbors in that area, people traveling, there's not a safety issue, we're just taking extra precautionary measures with the, because there is a low pressure and a high pressure?
Yeah, and those are fine. It's just when we're moving it, there's, there's other precautions they want to use as they look forward at a redesign.
Okay.
That's all. And, and also to assure the, the neighborhood that the, all, the bridge will be open for the winter. It will probably take a few weeks to get that done, but it will be open until we're ready to go in the spring. The design's been done, and then the extent of the work at that point should not be significant.
Thank you. It just seems somebody dropped the ball. It wasn't the city, and, you know, we, we shouldn't, this is tax dollars, we shouldn't have to absorb that. So, thank you, Madam Manager, and Mr. Mayor.
Council Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, so basically, what we're doing is, we're, next month, the bridge that we opened up, so it'll be two-way traffic, and construction will cease until the springtime.
Correct.
And then when construction resumes in the springtime, which will be in April, maybe?
I guess that's a good, it could be, it depends on the, the season, but let's say April.
And so, and then the, the bridge will go back to one way again while that construction resumes. And what will be the duration of that construction when it resumes? How much is left in terms of time?
We do not know that, because right now, we don't know the solution. I think when we were originally talking about the relocation work, National Grid thought it was only a few days. But now with the, the recent events that happened in Lawrence and Dover, they're taking some extra precautions. There might be some design changes. So we, the next few months, that's, or we want to prioritize the design, and then once we know what we're doing, then we'll be able to, to estimate it. But we are, I guess that's something, if we want to try to minimize that duration.
Okay. But do you have any idea? I mean, I'm not going to hold you to it, but do you have an estimate of what it might be, that it doesn't come up in discussion whatsoever?
We, we haven't talked specifically about dates, but I think the goal is that, so if we start in April, is that, that we want to finish by, let's, I mean, end of spring, early summer, I think is a, is a goal. But we haven't talked specific dates yet.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could, the, I have to agree with Council Leahy and Councilor, Council Elliot, that would, it would be good to, at the, at the appropriate time, Madam Manager, to, to get a report from the Law Department as to whether or not we have any recourse regarding the extra funding. But it also would be good to find out, especially if we're meeting with National Grid weekly on this project, what they estimate the duration will be once work resumes. And maybe we can just get that at a subsequent meeting. And maybe as far as a report from the Law Department, you can determine when that would be, when we should get, when you know whether or not we do have recourse. Thank you.
Council Millenizer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. Will the bridge also be open to pedestrian traffic, to foot traffic?
At least on one side, it will be. We are actually just reviewing a plan. We just got it today, so I have to look at that plan. But I believe on one side, at least, we're looking to restore.
Okay, thank you. And there's a follow-up on Council Kennedy's question relative to the Law Department. As you know, the standard contracts, they do have an errors and omissions clause in the contract. So as long as that's in the contract, picking up on Council Elliot's point about, they never even did a DigSafe, it appears they didn't do a DigSafe request, unless they relied on plans that we had in the engineers department. But I would certainly look at the errors and omissions clause, to see if we're covered. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Thank you. All right. Next, we have petition response to South Street.
Do we do minutes? Do we accept the minutes?
Yes. Did we?
No, we didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. So enthusiastic, get into-
Council, Council Leahy asked me to ask.
Well, we'll get there.
We've got public hearings.
More approval on the minutes, Mr. Mayor, more approval on the minutes.
Second in.
Second by Council Serrano. Great job. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leahy. Council Mercy, do you have a question?
Are we on to South Street yet?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to do the public hearing right after South Street.
Um, South Street. It was, it's a petition response. It's a petition response to a person named John McDonough, who talked about his concern in that area, which is his business on that street, Highland Street. So that, this is also going to be for a public hearing at 7:00 for Chapter 266 vehicles and traffic. So I'm happy to see that there. And I'm happy to see that, it seems, what he was asking for, that it is, remains a two-way street from Father Ronan to Highland Street when school is not in session. When school is in session, it'll become one-way. Be that as it may, I noticed, I looked in the Chapter 266, is there any timeline, for example, during the day when school is in session? Is it one-way from 8:00 to 4:00? Does that specify anywhere there? Because that would be okay, because he actually went to the school to talk to the principal, and they said if it were 8:00 to 4:00, one-way, 8:00 to 4:00, that'd be fine. Do you know if it specifies any time?
It does specify it, and I actually believe it's during pickup and drop-off, and not during the entire day. So it's, there's a period of time in the morning, and a period of time in the afternoon.
Do people driving their car know when that is?
Yeah, so it will be posted on the sign in the, it's the, the red do-not-enter sign, and it'll be right in the middle.
Okay, good. That's a good thing. And also, in the diagram, in the, on the second page, talks about Father Ronan Terrace- And also, in the diagram, in the, on the second page, talks about Father Ronan Terrace. So, it will be one-way from South Street going on to Gorham, right?
Correct.
So, I think that I would like to see a sign in the beginning of that that says one-way.
Agreed.
And then, they're talking about a stop sign at the end of that street, and then we have to do something with that after the, in the future, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we will do all this, right?
Yeah. As soon as the 60-day trial, as soon as those traffic ordinances go into effect, then the 60-day trial for the, those other things can go in, because there's a, there would have to be an ordinance for the stop sign.
Right.
And then, Father Ronan Terrace would actually revert back to what it's currently is in our ordinances, which is the direction from South Street to Gorham Street.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much, yes. So, I think John McDonough would thank you as well. Thank you.
All set? All right, I need a motion to accept the place in file 5-1, 5-2, and 5-3. So moved by Counsel Kennedy and seconded by Counsel Conway. Thank you. Now, we're going to go back to public hearings, general public hearing 3.1, ordinance amend Chapter 266 vehicle and traffic. Open the hearing. For those in favor, open the hearing. Anyone who wants to speak in favor? Favor? That portion is closed. Anyone next, open up the hearing for anybody not in favor, in opposition. In opposition, anyone who wants to speak in opposition? That portion of the hearing is closed, the hearing is closed. Any discussion in this matter? Okay. I need a motion to adopt by Counsel Malinazzo, seconded by Counsel Mercia. Roll call. Counsel Conway. Counsel Elliot.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Malinazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Nine yeas. All right. Then, next, we have utility public hearing. Sienna Engineering Group Incorporated, behalf of T C Systems Incorporated, which is AT&amp;T requests installation of telecommunication conduit in the vicinity of 100 Tenth Street Street. Want to open the hearing? Those in favor, want to speak in favor? Yes. Just introduce yourself and...
My name's Adam Heller, I'm here from Sienna Engineering Group, on behalf of T C Systems. Might be happy to answer any questions or give an explanation if needed.
Any questions? Nope. I think we're all set.
Great.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak in favor? In favor? That portion of the hearing is closed. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion is closed, the hearing is closed. Any discussion? Need a motion to refer to a wire inspector for report and recommendation?
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Cirillo. Thank you. So, the public hearings are over. We're now back to 5.4, communication, accept resignation of Cherry Hall Board of Health. Need a motion to accept the place in file?
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Conway. Next, we have communication with City Manager, request out-of-state travel, D P D, and developmental services, and Law Department. Need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Elliot. Roll call. Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliot.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Malinazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Nine yeas. Next, we have votes from the City Manager. Vote authorize City Manager execute permanent easement between the city and Mass Electric off YMCA Drive bus parking easement area. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the City Manager to execute a perpetual easement from Massachusetts Electric Company to the city of Lowell over a portion of the property for the benefit of the city, its successors and assigned to use, operate, repair, replace, and reconstruct the improvements within the easement area for the movement and parking of buses related to that serve the city. Its successors are assigned to use approximately 1,500 square feet portion of the property located off YMCA Drive in said Lowell. Need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Cirillo. Any discussion? Roll call. Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliot.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Malinazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
That's nine yeas. Next, vote transfer 136,400 in the Police Department to cover costs for training for this fiscal year. Waive the full reading, second reading by title, to transfer 136,400 in funds to cover the cost for training for this fiscal year to the Police Department. I need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
By Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Conway.
Mr. Mayor?
Any discussion?
I see the chief is here, or through you, Madam Manager, this is a, it's a significant transfer, is there, was this underfunded, or we doing more training, we doing?
Thank you, Counsel Elliot. Mr. Baldwin can address the, this transfer, and I know the chief is here to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Madam Manager. This, this transfer is something that the Council sees annually. It's an amount of monies that are transferred into a receipt reserve for appropriation account. The money comes from in-service training, training that the Police Department does and other, other police forces pay into the fund. So, this money is used annually to supplement the police budget for qualifications training. It pays for such things as, you know, sometimes it's tasers or ammunition, other expenses. So, it's an opportunity for the city to not have to use tax dollars for those expenses. So, that's the purpose of the transfer.
That's a, that's a good explanation, that's what I wanted to hear, and I, I mean, we clearly have to be training and retraining and providing the equipment that our police officers need these days. Just wanted to know. So, each year, this is, this is a transfer from funding that we do receive, and we won't see this in the budget, which is why we see it, it's not tax dollars, it's money that does come in, receipts we serve for appropriation, as you mentioned.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliot.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Malinazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
That's nine yeas. Next, vote transfer $60,000 for maintenance, repair, and overtime to Cemetery Department. Waive the full reading, second reading by title, to transfer $60,000 in funds for the general improvement, maintenance, and repair as well as overtime at the Cemetery Department. I need a motion to adopt?
We just get an explanation?
And seconded by, just, by Counsel Noon. Discussion? Madam Manager?
Thank you, and again, I will turn this over to the CFO, Connor Baldwin, to explain the circumstance surrounding this $60,000 transfer.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Similar to the discussion we just had about the police money, the cemetery sale of lots is another special fund that provides for monies that come in when people buy grave lots in the city cemeteries. The money is set aside to be used specifically for improvements to the cemeteries and for the care of the land. So, there are a few needs of the department that were identified by the Cemetery Commission. There was a meeting and a vote of the Cemetery Commission that precedes this vote, however, it's the Council that is the appropriating authority that needs to actually effectuate the transfer. There are a number of sort of maintenance items that are proposed in the year, as well as some overtime to supplement some of the burials that will be needed throughout the year. And this is also not tax dollar funds.
So, were they fixing the building, you're saying? So, in the report, it says they...
Yes, according to...
That one major building that's out there?
So, according to the report, the garage, some of the outside doors, as well as, and this has been the case for a number of years, and Mr. Donison may be able to elaborate, they've been expanding certain sections of West Lawn, so improving the roadway, adding new sections of roadway are all things that this money is used to, is used for.
All right. Can you just explain the $20,000 in overtime, then?
Sure, I can elaborate on that. So, the, the commission, the Cemetery Commission last month reviewed the requests, it was $20,000 for overtime, doesn't necessarily mean that all of that will be expended throughout the year, but it's available for, they have two individuals and a summer individual that, that works, I believe, 10 to 12 weeks during the summer. And there's a lot of times during a Saturday burial where they're, they figure, well, this is a good opportunity to spend another four hours of overtime to do some maintenance along the trees and along the walls. As far as maintenance goes, I believe $10,000 of it was set aside for replacement of one side of the building. It's deteriorated, it's been hit by some equipment, as well as some, a couple of the doors, to replace those, as well as do some improvements inside at one of the bathrooms, well, there's only one bathroom, at the bathroom. And some paving, there's a section of roadway, it's about 600 feet of road that is going to get paved, and, which is, I think we appropriated or estimated about $5,000 for that. And then, there's some cracked ceiling throughout the cemetery, another $5,000. So, all of those, the overtime plus the road improvements, that's the building improvements, plus, I believe it was $15,000 for a piece of equipment, it was a new utility vehicle that would be purchased, and all of that totals $60,000.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Roll call. Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliot.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Malinazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Nine yeas. All right. Next, we have orders from the City Manager. Loan order $2,600,000 to pay for cars to acquire by purchase eminent domain or otherwise, 75 Bakken Drive, to serve as a site of the new high school. I need a motion to refer to a public hearing on October 9th?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Karen Cirillo. Counsel Cirillo, thank you.
Excuse me?
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, I mean, Mr. Mayor. I know that we're going to be discussing this at a public hearing, so I'll say more at that time, but at this point, I just have some questions that I'd like to ask in regard to this particular vote that might take place at a particular time. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the, to the city solicitor, how much are we paying the city relocation specialist? Do we have an idea on what we're paying that person?
Do you mean the consultant? Mr. Sleeper? Maybe the Law Department has that figure?
I don't have the exact figure based on the retainer ship, but I believe it is under contract, however, with Mr. Sleeper. We can get that information for you at, through separate communication.
So, you hired someone, but you don't know what you're paying them? I don't understand that.
No.
Madam Manager?
Thank you, through you. We can get you the report. Mr. Sleeper is a consultant, and what, I think what Mr. Velloso is saying, that he's under contract, so it's an ongoing work, but we can get you the details on what his contract provides. We're not, I can't tell you today how much he's billed yet under the contract, but it is ongoing, but we will provide the Council with that.
So, is this Mr. Sleeper, the person that is dealing with the eminent domain taking?
No, he is not the appraiser.
So, how much are we paying the appraiser? Could we have a breakdown of what we're paying certain people?
We can get that, yeah, we can get that. The appraisal, again, that was put out to a contract, we can get you the cost. The appraisal is finished, the relocation is not, that's an ongoing work.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Madam Manager, who has the authority to settle a case with the doctors? Is it the city's attorney, or is it the city specialist, such as the relocation specialist or the appraiser? Who is dealing with this eminent domain taking? Who's doing that?
Sure. So, at the start, the, there has to be an appraisal of the real estate, the value of the real estate, and that appraisal was completed recently, and that's the $2.6 million that's in the loan order going to a public hearing for October 9th, and that's a real estate appraiser. The relocation consultant is someone separate, and that's Peter Sleeper, and that is a process whereby we are required under law to file relocation plans with the D H C D, State Department of Relocation, and that's an ongoing process. We had submitted a draft to, to D H C D, as we are required to do, which included estimates and estimates of potential relocation costs. The owners of the property have a right to reply, and D H C D replies, so that's been an ongoing process. We are hopeful that D H C D will be able to finalize that plan in the next few weeks.
So, between the two people that we're talking about, who are they contacting when they're telling them the appraisal amount? Are they talking to the doctor, the doctors, or are they talking to the doctor's attorney? Who are they communicating with?
So, the attorneys speak to each other, our Law Department communicates with the doctors' attorneys.
Well, I'm understanding, Madam Manager, that they're not. I'm understanding that they're sending letters to the doctors' businesses or the doctors' homes.
So, that's, that's something separate, so our Law Department, the city solicitor, has been communicating with their attorney, Attorney Flynn.
Which is, well, according to him, this wasn't happening.
Well, I've seen the copies of the letters, but, but in terms of the notice to the property owners and tenants, that's required under the statute, so he was notified at the same time, but we are required under state law to give certain in-hand notices to property owners. So, we're just following what the statute lays out, but there has been communication between the doctor's attorney, as well as our city solicitor's office.
So, it appears that the amount of $2.6 million is based upon the initial real estate appraisal authorized by the city?
Correct.
It appears to me that the city is not disclosing that there is a separate relocation estimate at, at a minimum, which drives the numbers to at least $7.1 million. Are you familiar with that, Madam Manager?
So, as I just mentioned before, in fact, we provided the Council with the draft plan that Mr. Sleeper had filed, but the plan has not been finalized or approved by Department of D H C D in this, which is the State Department. So, at that point, when it's final, then we will know the figures. What we did provide the Council with is the, Mr. Sleeper's draft, and in that draft, among other things, it includes a span of an estimate of potential relocation costs, which are between $3.5 million and $4.5 million, and that has to be approved by the state. However, sorry.
I'm sorry.
However, the, the doctors, through their consultant, separate from their attorney, have a right to respond to D H C D, which they've done, and so, this is a work in progress.
Well, from what I'm understanding, it says that the estimate comes from the city's very own consult, relocation consultant.
That's what I just said, the $3.5 million to $4.5 million is from Mr. Sleeper. And then, their consultant has a different opinion, which they submit, and as I said, that...
Well, their combined total value of the real estate and relocation costs could total anywhere between $7.1 and $11 million, that's what I'm understanding.
That's what they're alleging, yes.
That's what, that's what I'm hearing.
very own consult, relocation consultant.
That's what I just said. The 3.5 million to 4.5 million is from Mr. Sleeper. And then their consultant has a different opinion, which they submit, and as I said, that-
Well, their combined total value of the real estate and relocation costs could total anywhere between 7.1 and 11 million dollars. That's what I'm understanding.
That's what they're alleging, yes.
That's what, that's what I'm hearing.
But the relocation plan, as I said, is a work in progress. We're hopeful that that can be resolved, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. As I said, it's been ongoing for several weeks, where they have input and we have input.
And I'm understanding also that project delays in the form of any challenge to the taking will cost the city 1.5% per month based upon project costs. That's what I'm hearing as well, which, that could add an amount of 400, plus with that added 400 million price tag for the schools.
I don't know where that figures.
Oh, that's what I'm hearing.
But I can tell you, we're proceeding, you know, as required under the law. We have to get an appraisal of the real estate, which we did. We have to give notice of the appraisal, which we've done, in order to proceed with the taking. We have to give notice on a public hearing on the loan order, which we're in the process of doing. And simultaneous with that, we're also following the law as far as relocation plan to be approved by the state, and which the doctors and their attorney are participating in, or their attorney on their behalf.
And those sites that they, that we had a list of those sites to possibly relocate them, none of them are sufficient enough?
Again, this is a work in progress. You know, these are estimates, and the relocation plan, as I said, goes through the state and will be approved by them, but until the individual tenant or owner of property moves, you really don't know what the relocation costs are. It's only then that you know for sure, but there's no question, when there's an eminent domain taking, that the city or, or state or whoever is doing the taking as a government body owes to the, the owner of the property the, the value of their real estate, and also has to relocate the tenants, and that's what we're, that's what we're doing.
And we don't have any available space at the Hamilton Canal District?
You know, I, I can't comment on that. This is, as I said, this process is a work in, in progress.
Thank you.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, these are all good questions in anticipation of the public hearing on October 9th. I just wanted to state that once we get the loan order approved, assuming it gets approved, and then we go through the taking and we do a protanto-taking, and then it all gets resolved in court, we're not going to be delayed one day. And I appreciate the fact that Counsel Mercier's saying it's going to cost us 1.5 million dollars a month. Well, it's not going to cost us 1.5 million dollars a month due to an eminent domain or a relocation issue, because according to the master general law, you can go to court, take title to the property, and then it all gets worked out after, after the title is actually within, within the city's control. So we're on schedule with the MSBA, as I understand it from reading your emails and memos. So again, I look forward to the public hearing on October 9th, and I don't expect any delays whatsoever. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counsel Elliott?
Thank you, through you, to City Manager. So this appraisal, we went out for solicitation and got, are we required to do two or three? I'm trying to think another one. The city does take or dispose of property, we are required by master general law to get two or three appraisals?
Under the statute, we have to have at least one appraisal for eminent domain, but we're not opposed to getting a second if that's going to help resolve the case, and so that's just ongoing discussions, but for purposes of the statute, we, we have followed the law.
So we just got one appraisal?
We have one appraisal so far.
Okay. And it came back at 2.6. So what was factored in the budget for option three for eminent domain taking?
So eminent domain is not part of the MSBA budget process. That's, those are unreimbursed expenses outside of that.
Same thing with relocation, so none of that was factored in, in the bottom line?
Correct.
Well, it has to be factored in what the city is going to borrow.
For our purposes, but for the cost that is associated with option 3A, that wouldn't include costs that are not reimbursable.
Right. Okay. Okay. Counsel Milonazzo's right, we have a public hearing coming up on this, so we'll have some other questions then. Thank you.
Well said. Counsel Leahy?
So the 2.6 loan order that we're going to put out to a public meeting, that's, that's what they're saying the estimated value is for the?
For the real estate.
Okay. Can, why is the appraisal so, why is the tax appraisal so different from this estimate?
Well, so we, I, I believe we provided a copy of the, but commercial appraisals are different than the assessed value.
Taxes.
They'll look at other opportunities, including income-based analysis, as well as sometimes highest and best use and so forth, so it's, it's not uncommon for it to be different than what the city assesses the value at.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, that will be put out to a public hearing. Next, we have 8.1 resolution support.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Will we just take a vote on that one? Just like, all in favor, all opposed on, on that? Can we do that?
Do you want a roll call?
Roll call, it's fine.
Roll call.
Counsel-
Wait, wait a minute.
To have, to have the hearing.
Senator Public Hearing.
To refer to a public hearing.
Counsel Conway.
All those in favor to refer to a public hearing?
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Present.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have resolution of support of national suicide prevention awareness in the month of September. We have the full reading and second reading by title. To become a partner with the city of Yorkville, Illinois, and 187 other cities in the proclamation project in support of national suicide prevention awareness in the month of September. I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
By Counsel Cirillo, seconded by Counsel Conway. Any discussion? Counsel Cirillo?
Yes, this was, this is wonderful, and I'm, I'm so excited about this because this is from my motion, and I, I think that this is a really, a really good thing, and that's all I wanted to say.
Roll call.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
All right, next, we have reports of subcommittee. We have the Neighborhood Subcommittee of September 17, 2018. Counsel Cirillo?
Yes. We had fantastic attendance at the Neighborhood Subcommittee meeting. Counsel Noon was there, Counselor Leahy, Michael Gary was there, Mayor Samaras, Jerry Nutter of the School Committee, Jim Donison from DPW, Lowell Police Superintendent Richardson, Lowell Fire Chief Winward, Captain Goulner. Gosh, I could go on for days about this meeting, but I'm going to try and keep it short. I, I made it clear that we were going to discuss neighborhood safety without interfering with the Safety Subcommittee or the Zoning Subcommittee. This meeting was strictly how we as residents can be better prepared, learn different ways as a community to be safer. So Superintendent Richardson commented on the, on the recent disturbance at Lowell High School, and Captain Goulner provided input on the statistical crime information that they talk about in each neighborhood meeting, and he went through each, each individual item and explained about it, which was really nice. And so many great points were brought up. I asked Superintendent Richardson to speak first, in which he spoke about the high school incident. What struck me was the Superintendent Richardson stressed respect and having a good relationship with the city community, to have the people understand the police are not, that they're working, they're there to help, they are there to help, excuse me, and to call them and don't, and, and when you call them, they don't ask any questions, they just want to know what's happening and that you're safe. And let's see, and he is, is working to get the offers, officers out in the community more, to have the residents get to know the officers that are in their area, and, and the response from the, the community that was there was wonderful, asking how can we help, which was really nice. And Chief Winward spoke about the gas leaks that were happening. So this was a really good time to have a safety meeting for the neighborhoods, and, and how we had sent over trucks over to help, and, and, and he stressed that we call the fire department if we feel that we have a leak. And he also mentioned that hurricane season is upon us, and for possible power outages, the things that you want to keep in mind is, do not put your generators in the house. That's, that's one thing he stressed. And also, keep cash on hand to put gas in your car and check on your neighbors, and make sure outside windows are closed. And let's see, and he mentioned that we have some new water vehicles that are on hand to help out, and he, he mentioned that they go out into the community and talk about, to, to speak about drugs and, and to try and be good role models. And a few issues that came up are wider, considering wider speed bumps at schools, ways to make crossing guards safer, box trucks parked on sidewalks, and, and so I, I don't know if I missed anything, but I, it was a really, really fantastic meeting that lasted for hours, and there was a lot of, there, what was nice also is that there were, there was good representation from people throughout the city, and, and it was, it was a very, very good meeting. Thank you.
I need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Counsel Leahy, seconded by Counsel Elliott. Question?
Thank you, just on neighborhood safety. Madam Manager, I get some calls Saturday night, and in fact, Sunday morning. I don't know if there was a celebration or something going on Saturday night in the city, but I can tell you, in South Lowell, I get two calls on two separate parties. One party had over 200 people, and the police department deployed seven police officers for well over an hour. Buses were pulling up, dropping people off. There was another one on Woburn and Staveley Street. Again, I got a call for one in Highland, so I'm not sure what, what to do, but this party went till 5:30 in the morning, and, you know, the neighborhood is, is not the first or the second time either, and A, it's a disruption to the neighborhood, but B, we had seven police officers on a Saturday night, rightfully so, trying to, you know, disband this, this party, and I don't know if it's, I guess my point is, how many of these are taking place in the city? It seems that it's a bit of a growing issue where there are these big parties taking place, and, you know, we, we want things to take place, you know, that people can celebrate, but this was way over the top, and it wasn't just one or two in the city. So if, if we could, you know, I don't want to create another report, Madam Manager, but I'm sure it's not just in one particular neighborhood, I, because I know I hear complaints in other parts of the city.
I, I'll speak with the chief and see if we can get an idea of what's going on, and-
Okay.
But, but obviously, this is a strain on the resources for sure.
Right. Exactly. That they, so, thank you, appreciate it.
Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. Just on the Neighborhood Subcommittee meeting, Madam Mayor, Manager, Chief Richardson was there, and he knows about these issues, but the, the big issues were the, the trucks and cars parked on the sidewalks, if we can be more vigilant about writing the tickets again and towing. Beacon Street, I guess when we redesigned up there a couple of years ago, I was unaware, we took all the flashing lights out, so we need to put some school signs up, you know, 20 mile per hour school zone signs. I guess we never replaced those. And then just the traffic at those two schools, if we could, again, look into, I know they don't, they said they don't like the wide speed bumps, but that might be the way to go up there, just to slow the traffic down in that-
In Beacon, on Beacon Street?
No, on, throughout the, the long driveway between the two schools.
Oh, okay.
When you go into the schools and, just to slow the traffic down. That was, that's what their main concerns were up there. Thank you.
All set? Okay. Next, we have the Arts and Cultural Subcommittee of September 25, 2018. Counsel Cirillo?
Hi, yes. Thank you again. We had a really great, another great meeting with the Lowell Management Group, and Counselors Kennedy and Mercier were in attendance, along with Henry Marchand, Pete Lally, John Shimelli, Jack Lally, Andrew Holden, and Chris Deck. And basically, what, what, they, they talked about coming in and, and making sure that people have a great experience from when they leave their home until after they see the show and they are home again, and that's their goal. And they mentioned that the handicap bathrooms are going to be, there are going to be more handicap bathrooms, and that just went out to bid, and they're hoping that construction starts in January and February. They, they've already started booking for fall, well, they started booking for fall, and they're looking forward, they've booked for next year somewhat, and in acts such as Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer, the Boston Pops, once again, let me see, I have lots of notes for this one, too. They have lots of great events, for, for example, for the Boys and Girls Club. They're working with part, partners, downtown businesses, and they're speaking with restaurants and hotels, and they're trying to get a synergy going with, with the community as far as that, and, let me see. They, they mentioned about how, a bill that's in the House, 4578, and it's in committee in the House, and it's regarding class A casinos, and what that did was that enabled municipality-owned impact venues to go into a gaming fund, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe Counselors Mercier and Kennedy can help me with this. And so, so that's, that's in, in the works, and they're also working on the loading dock door, and they finally received funding for that, and they're in the design architectural phase, which is wonderful, so they're going to make the door larger so that the larger acts can come into Lowell Memorial Auditorium, which is going to be wonderful. And they also said that they're teaming up with a limo company for possibly having packages for restaurants, theater, and limo. So I'm, I'm trying to remember everything. I have notes everywhere, so, so, thank you.
I need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Counsel Mercier, seconded by Counsel Kennedy, and comments?
If I just could add two things. One of the things that, that Counsel Cirillo was referring to is that the enabling legislation for the casino that will open in Everett included a provision that sends 0.5% of the gross to venues like the Lowell Memorial Auditorium and, and other similar venues throughout the Commonwealth. So that should be, they indicated that they weren't sure exactly how that money was dispersed, but that would mean a, a good influx in, in revenue for the auditorium, so that was a good thing. And then the other thing I think should be pointed out is that, excuse me, is that Mr. Lally has, has assembled a really good team for the auditorium, and I think that every member of the subcommittee has high hopes that, that things will change around there, and that we'll have a lot more, a lot more dates open than, than what we've had in the past couple of years.
Thank you. Counsel Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not only will they have the greatest shows as they did many years ago, and we had the Three Amigos down there, but they're going to continue on with that progress to have great acts there. Not only that, but they will accommodate the different organizations, the Boys and Girls Club auctions, and so many other things that they have anyway. But the thing that stressed, they stressed that I think is magnificent is the partnership that they're going to have with all the tremendous restaurants that we have in the city. They're going to coordinate a schedule whereby, these are the shows that are coming in, you might want to upgrade your staff so that when people, before they go to the, see a show, they'll go and eat. When they come out of the Lowell Memorial Auditorium, they'll be looking to eat at a restaurant or whatever. So that is a coordinated effort between the businesses downtown and the auditorium, and that's second to none. People don't want to come into the city of Lowell, go out after and try to find a place to eat, but nothing's open because they closed at eight o'clock and now it's 10 and they'd like to get a sandwich somewhere or whatever. This is not going to happen. This is going to be open and people are going to be walking away saying, oh, let's go to Lowell, there's a great experience there. So this was exciting, to say the least. And so I, I'm just excited about the whole thing as Karen is. And so we should be. This is good. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. Thank you. Uh, motion passes. Next, we have the Finance Subcommittee joint with the School Committee Finance Subcommittee of September 25th, 2018. Council Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight at 5:30, we met, both Finance Subcommittee, the school and the, uh, city joint Finance Subcommittee met, uh, in the mayor's reception room. Um, it was recorded and will be televised, uh, later this week by LTC. Uh, but the, the purpose of the meeting was to discuss both city finances and school department finances. Um, their motion had been made by Mr. Nutter to have, uh, a joint meeting as well. So, uh, the city manager and Connor Baldwin, uh, provided a handout on the status of the city finances. Uh, back in May, they implemented cost controls, knowing that there were some, um, some financial constraints that we were facing in the budget and FY19 that would have an impact on our, our free cash. That number hasn't come in, um, yet. It hopes to be certified in November. Uh, in the past, the, we've had in excess of $4 million in free cash, uh, but because of snow and ice and, um, we've seen, they did see a reduction in the fund balance, that number will be less this year. We have to still replenish $2 million in stabilization fund, uh, for this year's budget and there are expectations that, uh, we'll meet, meet that. But, um, in the past, we have paid back on some other outstanding bills that were unanticipated. Um, and that will not happen this year. Uh, that being said, those, uh, measures are still in place, monitoring overtime, um, expenditures of, um, all expenditures coming through, as well as limited hiring or evaluating all hiring coming through. Um, so this, uh, the administration went through our budget trends, um, where we have received additional money, our new growth, and we have had, um, significant growth. Uh, unfortunately, some of the, um, fixed costs that are affected are healthcare and retirement, along with debt service and, um, and waste management. And I, uh, we didn't make a motion. We will, we did recess this meeting, but I do think it's important that we perhaps meet and get a report, um, Madam Manager and, and Mr. Baldwin on that debt service and where we are at, what's coming online and in preparation for, you know, what, what the, 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 the big, the big debt service and the, the high school, um, the impact that's going to have. Uh, the other issue is waste management and I, both our solid waste disposal and recycling costs. The city manager is in the process of negotiating the contract that, both contracts will expire in December, um, as we've discussed in the last several council meetings. Recycling costs have gone through the roof and as well as solid waste, some of it, um, with recycling is the contamination that's taken place. So, um, that's something we'll receive a report and I think it'll be important to, to bring that forward as well on, on what that will be. And that won't go on the tax rate because that's a separate, um, fee that is assessed. So, um, um, we'll, we'll have to evaluate that as it moves forward. Can I just ask on that enterprise fund, um, that proprietary fund, that, that doesn't run a deficit at this point? I know it's, it's solid waste, recycling is on the general fund, correct?
Uh, actually, both run a deficit.
Okay.
The, some communities do operate their, uh, solid waste and recycling in an enterprise fund. For the city, that expense is paid by the general fund. So, uh, the receipts from, uh, people's water bills for refuse is taken into the general fund and then that's a budgeted expense in the Public Works Department.
Okay. Water sewer is, is separate-
Water and sewer both enterprise funds.
Is received on a fee. Right.
Right.
I, I, in terms of solid waste and, and recycling, that's a fee paid by the user or the, the property owner, um, but that fee does not keep up with what the city's costs are.
Okay. Um, so that's a report on, on the city side. Um, and then we did have the superintendent and members of the finance, uh, Finance Subcommittee and the, um, school side, um, Mr. Dakota, Mr. Lay, and Mr. Nutter, along with Council Melonazo, myself, and Council Nun from the Finance Subcommittee. Uh, we have a 40-page report that we received just tonight. Um, perhaps we can, I, I know members of the Subcommittee received it. Could we ensure that the rest of the city council receives this report from the superintendent or did everybody receive it?
Yeah, we, we didn't get it tonight, but we'll get it from the-
Okay, right.
-school department and, and circulate it.
Um, and we did, that's a good point, Madam Manager. This was just distributed at the Finance Subcommittee meeting and it lists the deficits and offsets that were not counted and a number of financial issues. And we had a discussion about it. As I mentioned, we continued the discussion. We started with the, um, with FY18 budget and, um, and worked our way through positions that weren't, were not, uh, backfilled or being backfilled. Um, the new business managers doing a complete evaluation, uh, or, or an audit, quite frankly, of all the accounts, um, in the school department. They're listed here and we went through some of the deficiencies that have taken place. There are clearly some deficiencies that, um, the school department or the city is going to be responsible for to pay back. Um, certainly food service offsets were used that, um, exceeded revenues and, um, some other items that were not funded by BACSEC. Uh, there were some transportation costs and telephone rates, um, but they're still going through that review. So I'm going to reschedule a, or schedule another meeting or joint Subcommittee to go into more detail or, um, once we're able to read through this report. So, uh, Mr. Man, Mr. Mayor, and, um, that's, it's a brief recap of a meeting that was filled with a lot of, um, a lot of detail and a lot of explanation on where we are from the fiscal perspective. From the city side, we are, we are doing okay, but it's, it's a tight budget. We have some, uh, some challenges that we're facing with fixed costs, as we mentioned, but we'll keep the council and the public updated on-
Thank you. Council Melonazo?
Uh, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, through the Chair of the Finance Subcommittee, uh, since we met at 5:30 and walking into the chamber, the Zoning Subcommittee, which was scheduled for October 16th, is going to be moved to November. And I know that both the Chair of the City Side, Council Elliot, and the Chair of the School Committee, Jerry Nutter, wanted to meet sooner than later. So that October 16th date is now available if we wanted to have another joint meeting of the Finance Subcommittee, um, because, uh, the time is, uh, you know, of the essence. So if we could do that. I'll just reschedule the zoning Subcommittee for sometime in November. And that actually is a request of a number of neighborhood groups who indicated that there's a lot going on during the month of October that they're involved in, be it through the Plenary Board or the Conservation Commission. So zoning was something that they could push off. Thank you.
Is there objection? I'll, um, through you, Mr. Mayor, if we can book that October 16th and, uh, if we could notify the school superintendent and, and that Subcommittee, that'd be great.
And hopefully we'll have the audit at that time too.
Okay.
It should serve as another tool.
Great. I know we did receive a policy that, um, if we could all, from, from the city side, some of the policy issues, I think it'd be helpful if we could refer that to the superintendent as well. I think it was sent by, um, sent by you, Connor, just in terms of, and, and I believe that they are in a holding pattern, if I remember correctly, when it comes to new hires and, uh, implementing some of similar policy initiatives, uh, initiatives called cost control measures that we've done on the city side here.
Council Leahy?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, could you just, again, we, um, so at the Subcommittee meeting, we got a, an overall of the, uh, a view of the finances, but, um, the TV studio, is that, shouldn't that have, um, been up and running by now with the monies that they were appropriated?
There are only two teachers in the, there's no supervision. There's two teachers there in the process of putting the program back together again at this point.
Right. They didn't mention that tonight. Are they going to bring it back up to four people again, fully staffed?
No, right, right now, till they make the adjustments in the budgets.
All right. But it's my understanding that mu, that that money that they use is already there out of the Comcast account. Can you get a report on that? Because the money should be there to bring back that-
But money's been set, money's been set aside for the truck to-
Well, we have a van that's sitting there and we have appropriation to fund the van, right? To equip the van. But we don't have the staff to use it. And it's my understanding that the money to fund those other positions is in the school committee's hands. So I don't know why we haven't-
But at this, but at this point, they're not going to make any decisions till they know they can make the decision.
But I think it's a separate issue.
No, the, the, the issue is how much money they have because they feel that they've bottomed out at this point, but then they're concerned that they're, they haven't bottomed out and that other positions might have to be cut. So, and that was said tonight also.
All right. But isn't that, but it's my understanding that that money is grant funded through the Comcast account, so that money can't be used for anything else except for those two positions.
The money that they have, but this is other monies for the, some of the positions, all did not come out of the PEG account. Did not.
All right. If we could just get a report on that?
So you have to get, I mean, there's money, mixed monies there, so we'll get a report for you.
All right. Thank you.
Any other discussions? Okay. I need a motion to accept as a report of progress by Council Conway, second by Council Nun. All right. Next, uh, Wire Inspector, National Grid Horizon, New England, requests permission to install a new pole located at 23 Holden Street. Need a motion to accept and adopt a company report.
So move.
So move by Council Nun, second by Council Mercier. Thank you. Next petition miscellaneous, Jasmine Ramos Medina, requests installation of overhanging sign at 16 Jackson Street. I need a motion to refer to the Department, Law Department for a report and recommendation.
So move.
By Council Mercier, second by Council Nun. Next, Kim, Kimline Sauce, requests installation of streetlights on Harding Street. Motion to refer to Traffic Engineer for a report and recommendation by Council Nun, second by Council Melonazo. Next, 10.3, National Grid, requests installation of electrical conduit on Andrew Street for its service to Motley Data Center. Need a motion to refer to a public hearing on October 9th, 2018 at 7:00 PM.
So move.
Motion by Council Kennedy.
Second.
Second by Council Nun. Next, we go into motions. We have the first motion by Council Mercier. Request city manager establish a process to enable individuals the ability to donate a bench to the city in honor of friends, Paul Lublin. I need a second by Council Mercier, I mean, Council Serrillo, Council Mercier.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past, in many, many years go by, and we never have any requests for this, and within the past month, I had two requests for a bench. Each person or each family, um, wanted to, as you can see, my next motion is for that particular reason. Um, and I called around to see if we could make this happen and there's nothing in place to do that. I mean, many years ago, long ago, we could call someone and they'd have it, it would happen. But today, nobody knows who to turn to to get this done. And I'm going to be honest, Tom Belga did a lot of this stuff and that's what we asked and it would, would happen. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Madam Manager, maybe we need something in place to let this happen. As you can see, the next motion that I have is regards to that. I have another motion as well. I didn't make the motion because I, I didn't know where to go with it, but people want to put a bench in Couples Square in memory, I mean, not in memory, in honor of someone that owned a business there for many, many years. It would be a surprise to that person, that's why I really didn't say it. I didn't know where to turn. Um, and, and I'm thinking, there's nothing greater than going out on a walk and then getting tired and seeing a bench and you'd like to sit down there. I know at the JFK Plaza, I just looked the other day, there's two beautiful benches there. People walk along and they sit down after a while. I think that's refreshing and nice and it's not going to cost the city anything. Um, I could reiterate the second, um, motion that I have in regards to that. So I don't know who we're gonna-
We'll, we will get a, a, a program together for this and make sure that everybody has access to the information, but it's a good idea.
Sure, that'd be wonderful. Thank you. Because I don't know what else to do or who to turn to.
Right.
And I, I don't want to say to the people, no, it's not going to happen, I don't know, or I don't know what to do. So that'd be nice.
We will certainly, we will certainly get that information together.
Thank you so much. I think whoever wants to do that, and it's not quite prevalent, it's not something that happens all the time, but when it does, we should be able to accommodate the people. They're going to pay for it themselves. I know some time ago, when my husband worked at, uh, on Stackpole Street at the housing over there, people from, that were elderly would go downtown and then they'd come back and they'd get halfway home and they'd be tired. And they said to my husband, what are we going to do? We're, we're tired. We can't make it all the way back. I wish there was a bench at the auditorium so we could sit there. So I brought up the motion and there's benches there now. People individually paid for them themselves and it's a comfort to people. So, um, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? No, thank you. Next, another motion by Council Mercier, request city manager have proper department install commemorative inscribed bench at Shed Park in memory of Craig Maxfield. Need a second by Council Serrillo?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is one of the reasons why I made the first motion, uh, the people that want to do that in memory of Craig Maxfield. He was a talented baseball player who spent many hours practicing and playing at Shed Park. They thought for his memory, they'd like to have a bench there. Um, I think it's only nice to do that. So that in itself would be referred to that committee or whatever. Now, you know, we have one for the veterans because they were coming to us all the time. Now they're vetted. I think this, um, as far as the bench that these people would put there, they'd have it in agreement with what's already there. Whatever the city would want, they would do it. So it's not like they just want to put any down thing up. They want to put something nice. So that's what, that's all about. Thank you so much.
We do not have a registered speaker, but did you have someone that wants to speak?
I'm sorry.
Hi, no, that's, thank you very much for that.
I did not know.
My name is Doreen Jennings and I'm actually, um, a friend of the Maxfield family and I'm spearheading the fundraising effort to hopefully have a bench installed at Shed Park. Um, so I'm here to advocate for support of the motion to accept as a gift an inscribed commemorative bench in memory of Craig. Excuse me, I'm not a public speaker. Um, Craig was a 23-year-old lifelong Lowell resident who died unexpectedly on August 11th. And I just want to tell you a few things about Craig. He attended, um, the Immaculate Conception Grammar School. He was a graduate of Lowell Catholic High School, um, a 2017 graduate of Merrimack College with a BA in Finance. And at the time of his death, he was working as a compensation specialist at Commonwealth Finance in Woburn. He was an exceptionally talented athlete and he excelled in baseball, hockey, and golf. Um, at Lowell Catholic, he was the starting shortstop for the 2013 state championship baseball team. He was a junior member of, uh, Long Meadow Golf Club and he was also a volunteer of Pitching for Kids, which is a nonprofit that raises money, um, through sports-related activities to provide targeted brands to kids in need across New England. Um, I have to tell you, by all accounts, Craig was not a drug user, he was not suicidal, and his friends and family are still struggling to understand what happened to Craig after a night out with his friends. So the motion before you is, um, to give the city with an inscribed commemorative bench to be in, to be installed at Shed Park, um, where Craig and his family spent many, many happy hours, um, as Craig honed his skills as a ballplayer. Uh, the plan is to work closely with DPEW and Door Parks and Recreation to identify a suitable bench, to determine the cost, to identify a sighting location, um, to plan a dedication ceremony, and we're hoping all this will be done, um, by the spring, um, right at the start of the baseball season. The fundraising is going to be done through a GoFundMe account to provide maximum transparency and accountability. We feel like we're going to be able to raise a lot of funds for this and any funds collected over the cost of the bench, um, will be donated to the Pitching for Kids organization.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me say that if you're not- First, let me say that if you're not a public speaker, you certainly fool me. You did a tremendous job, and I'm so sorry because I did not know you were here to speak on this motion, or I would have brought you up here two hours ago. Do you understand that? Okay, thank you so much. This is what it's all about, closure, some type of closure, some type of comfort to such a horrendous accident. I'm so sorry. My honor to present it for you.
Well said. All right, next, motion by Councilor Mercia and Councilor Elliott, doesn't need a second. Request City Manager have Superintendent Police provide opinion and report regarding the cost for scheduling two mounted police patrols in downtown when Lowell High School goes in and out of session during the school year. Councilor Mercia, then Councilor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I know they had a meeting last night downtown with parents over this particular issue, but we had the mayor's opioid task force, so I find it very hard to be at two places at once, or I would have been there, because to me, this is a very serious issue whereby, gee, you have the youth today that have little respect for police. I mean, not everybody, I shouldn't lump everybody, I'm not, but it was horrendous to know what happened. It was just devastating and a blow to the city. And the other day, I had to come to City Hall to present a motion, and when I did, it was noon time, and I was just getting out of work, and I didn't realize, but everybody was walking in the street and the sidewalks because they had a teacher's workshop or whatever, and this class was dismissed a half a day. And you've seen police and cruisers at every single intersection, and you know what I'm thinking? Gee, I really think that they belong in neighborhoods, I don't think they belong downtown. So, I'm thinking, maybe if we could get an idea of the cost of two horses, and I'm not saying we can even afford it, I don't even know, but if we could substitute the police and cruisers that are all in the downtown and send in two horses and put them back in the neighborhoods where they belong, I think maybe we could do that. If it's too expensive, maybe we could put a canine downtown, but to take the police out of neighborhoods and put them downtown, gee, I think, I know we, public safety is first, but it's just that I think a horse is intimidating. I think that two horses downtown, if we could afford it, ooh. I already talked to the chief, I said, chief, what do you think? He said, ooh, if we could afford it, it would be the greatest thing again. It worked before, and I'm wondering if maybe it could work again, just to take the police and put them where they really belong in the neighborhoods. I think maybe, maybe four cruisers equals one horse, because you don't mess around with a horse, and they're powerful as it is, and that's what we need. And I'm not saying every, all the time, just when school gets out and, school gets in and school gets out, but I think it's something we could probably look at again. Sometimes the things that worked before, maybe we can bring them back and have them work again.
All right, Councilor Elliott.
Well, I co-sponsor the motion because I'd like to get some information on it. I do think they're an effective measure and means of crowd control, and clearly, in the downtown, that particular day, we could have used the horses. And they were effective in the past, and one of the reasons why we did get, decided not to continue, and because they became expensive, or they, quite frankly, they got old, and we had to, we had to get younger horses. So, but it was unfortunate to see the videos that we all saw going viral and to hear the accounts of what has taken place. So, I think it's something that we should look into. I think it would help for that particular window of time. But then again, it's, we just had a finance subcommittee on how tight finances are, and they are an expense, and we do have a number of festivals where they could be effective, and they're, you know, it's nice to, nice to have them in public, but again, I realize they are a cost, and we have, particularly in that department, we're being pulled in so many directions to have officers deployed here for this purpose and et cetera. So, I think it's worthy of looking into and get a report anyway, Madam Manager. Thank you.
Councilor Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's, this is, I think it's a great idea, good motion to take a look at, and again, obviously, expenses are going to be a big factor. But I think that the mayor was headmaster, and myself was housemaster at Lowell High. We, a number of years ago, experienced this, where at the close of school, we had a couple mounted police officers, and you're absolutely right as far as intimidation, because, you know, you're looking at an animal that's 1,200 or 1,400 pounds, or perhaps even moa, and it certainly did, it was excellent for crowd, you know, working the crowd, making sure that they moved along, and I think, again, I think it was very effective. And what I believe Councilor Elliott just mentioned, not just for after school at the high school, but perhaps we could utilize them in other places. So, I think it's well worth it. I'm not exactly sure what happened in the past, why we discontinued it, and it's too bad, but bringing it back, I think, might be a good idea to investigate that. Thank you.
Any further, yes, Madam Manager.
We'll get a report from the chief. I recall the use of the horses, and I was a big proponent of them. I could be wrong. I think we originally got them through a grant funding back in the day, and then the grant funding dissipated, and the horses got older, as you say. So, but we will get a report on that.
Well, thank you. I mean, as Councilor Conway stated, that we were back there, we actually used that process. What I remember about the students, I mean, they actually liked the horses. They weren't intimidated by the horses, they were kind to the horses, and they had, there seemed to be a better rapport with the policeman on the horses with the students, so they were able to move traffic along, and there was nobody that, we'll say, was nasty or out of control. But they do act, I mean, they can be utilized very well in a dangerous situation, or prevent a dangerous situation. So, I think it's worth looking at. Thank you. It was a good motion. Next, question, Mr. Conway, Councilor Conway, request City Manager have Emergency Management Team provide an updated report regarding their practice, practices and procedures to the City Council. Need a second by Councilor Cirillo, Councilor Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, I think it's self-explanatory, but, you know, looking back, and we've talked about this a few times, even here tonight, about, excuse me, Andover, North Andover, and Methuen. I was at a meeting down here, matter of fact, you, City Manager, was also down here at a meeting when we heard what took place. And, you know, that's a scary situation. I had, actually, my two daughters heard about it, it was certainly heard in New York, and they were concerned. So, when we take a look at it, the public as a whole certainly were concerned, and I think it might be a great idea if we, if we bring the Emergency Management Team and to give a report, and to, you know, let the public know, not just the City Council, but an update to the public, because, you know, to find out what best practices are. And as we all know, best practices change year to year. So, I think it might be a good idea that we enlighten, not, again, not just the City Council, but also the public. Thank you.
Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mayor. At Public Safety Subcommittee meeting, one of the topics was the comprehensive management plans, and I believe Chief Winwood indicated that he's close to completing that plan. I think I also indicated to him too, is that having planned is good, but communicating that plan to the public is even more significant to the plan that you have. So, he's talking about identify a number of, a way to communicate that plan to the public. So, we're looking forward to talk to him some more as to how you communicate these plans to the public, which is, as Councilor Conway indicated, it's very crucial that you have way to communicate that plans to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? All set. Next, by Councilor Cirillo, request City Manager work with the Lowell Police Department to implement procedures to better keep our crossing guards and children safe. Need a second by Councilor Kennedy.
Hi, yes, thank you. This, this motion comes from the Neighborhood Subcommittee meeting. There was a crossing guard there, and she said that she was dodging cars while trying to keep the kids safe, while trying to get across the street, and, and so, this is very important, and that, so, that's, that's basically it. I don't want our crossing guards dodging, dodging cars to try and get our children safely across the street. Thank you.
Councilor Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is an excellent motion, and, and when you take a look at, let's use, for example, Douglas Road and Andover Street, and I know that the City Manager and Assistant City Manager have worked very hard to make sure that we have those pedestrian crossing lights. However, I have visited that area many times after school, and I've talked to the crossing guard, and she said to me, which was kind of enlightening, she said, I think it's almost even more dangerous now than it was prior. So, we discussed the situation, and as you well know, in those crossing lights, it's two sides, so when they press the button on one side, it's not, you're not seeing it on the other side. That's number one. Number two, those are just flashing lights, so nobody's stopping. And the two of us stood in that crossing section, and we counted the cars that went by, 15, 16 cars, and nobody stopped. Now, one of the problems that she said was, when the children come and they press the button, they automatically think that now it's, once they see that flashing, they can go across the street. And to be quite frank with you, they are not stopping at all. And the other point is, again, on the other side, when you press buttons on one side, it is not being shown on the other side. So, again, we talked numerous times, and we discussed the fact that maybe there's an additional sign that needs to, needs to take place there, because it doesn't say stop, even though, again, in the crossing lines, they should. So, I'm glad that Councilor Cirillo put this on, because I think we have to take a good look at this, because, you know, again, I'm going to use that, that street as the example. It's almost a highway, and there's only one area that, that has a crossing line. So, you see people trying to cross that, that street with, you know, with basically three lanes, four lanes, and it's, it's a very dangerous situation, and I've noticed there too, that they're using the center lane as a passing lane now. So, you know, hopefully, we can address that, that situation, and see if we can kind of firm it up and try to make things as safe as we possibly can. Thank you.
Councilor Melonazzo first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. It's a good motion, where I spend the majority of my day in the city of Revere. I can tell you, they had the same issue down in Revere, and what they've done since last school year, they've not only equipped their crossing guards with the yellow vests that our crossing guards wear, but they've also given them orange, bright orange flags. So, when they step out even a little bit into the street, they wave the flags, because it's, again, it's just something that the drivers, and they don't notice, the kids notice. The kids notice standing on the sidewalk until they come with, not only sometimes lights, but also the orange flag. So, again, something to consider, it's very inexpensive, and it makes people feel safe, and quite frankly, I think they are safer. Thank you.
Madam Manager.
Briefly, to Councilor Conway's point, I know this was raised, once the light was installed, Andover and Douglas, and pursuant to conversations, I know the traffic engineer did go out and look, and perhaps we put some signs further as you approach either side. But also, the Chief Richardson had cars out there some mornings, and there was a real enforcement issue in a span of a not-so-long period around the morning crossing. I think there were several tickets and many warnings given to cars that would, did not stop. So, part of it's enforcement and training the public that you have to stop. So, we, it is something that we're aware of and are working on, we'll work with the, with the chief regarding that type of incident, as well as how do we make everybody safe. But enforcing the law as far as stopping for pedestrians, stopping for crossing guards is really critical in the city.
All set. Thank you. Next, by Councilor Cirillo, request City Manager have Proper Department provide a report to the City Council as to the installation of a no-turn on red sign at all intersections of Boylston Street and Rogers Street. Councilor Cirillo?
Yes, hi.
Need a second by Councilor Mercia.
I know that this, this area is going to be redone, but in the meantime, in the interim time, I'm hearing with regards to families almost getting hit by, by cars turning on red, turning right on red, which I know is their right, but, and this, this actually, this motion came from the annual back-to-school bike safety rodeo, and I talked with many, many families there, and they spoke about how this is, this is a really unsafe intersection. So, that's, that's where this comes from, speaking with many families about how, how people are turning on red, and they're not really paying attention, and one whole family almost got hit. So, that's, there is that. Thank you.
Councilor Kennedy.
Yeah, just, I think this is a good motion. I mean, this is a complex intersection, but you've got the park there, so that at certain times, there's a lot of activity, so, and I do know that, you know, that you're able to go, go right on red, and people do, just because, excuse me, a lot of times, you're just queued up, and so, if you get an opportunity, you're just going to grab it and go. But anything that we can do to make this intersection safer, I think is a good, a good idea, at least on the short term, because I think that, I'm not sure, maybe the traffic engineer has left, but I think that they, that's supposed to be next year, I think they're supposed to start with that.
Yeah, they're supposed to start construction in the spring.
Yeah.
Okay. Next, by Councilor Cirillo, request City Manager have Proper Department provide a report regarding ways of making Boylston Street more bicycle pedestrian friendly. Need a second by Councilor Mercia, Councilor Cirillo.
Sorry. This also came from the annual back-to-school bike safety rodeo, when I talked with many, many families, because their children are riding on Boylston Street, trying to get to Shed Park, and, and it's, it's been, it's been dicey for, for many, and, and so, that's, that's why I put this motion on, was, was to try and find ways to make it more bicycle friendly. Thank you.
All right. Next motion by Councilor Cirillo, request, yes, I'm sorry, Councilor Leah.
Yeah, through you to the manager. That area, again, is just, we don't enforce the no-parking. There's plenty of no-parking signs, and everybody parks, and everybody's out in the street.
Yeah, we will look at that, as well as what other measures can be taken.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, by Councilor Cirillo, request City Manager have Proper Department prepare a report regarding installation of 15 mile-per-hour signs near all Lowell schools. A second by Councilor Mercia, Councilor Cirillo.
Hi, yes, thank you. This, once again, comes from my, my Neighborhood Subcommittee meeting, and about the safety of our children. And I feel that 20 mile-an-hour zone is, and I understand it's Massachusetts state standard. I have, I actually have the standards right in front of me for the Mass DOT, for Chapter 90, Section 17, for the standards for school zones. But I just, I see that in California, Arizona, Nevada, I know that we're not in California, but I think we're better as Massachusetts. They all have 15 mile-an-hour speed zones for their school zones. And I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, our, our crossing guards, guards dodging traffic and, and all of that, and so, so I read here that we can write in to have written approval of a variance, and so, I, and I was, I would like to have an engineering study of three schools here in, in Lowell. I would like to have an engineering study of the Stosglossa, ugh, I'm nervous.
Stoklo.
Yes, middle school, the Riley Elementary, and the Butler Middle School on Gorham, to see just how, how the traffic is flowing, and if the traffic is going 20 miles an hour. I feel that if, if the, if the signs were I feel that if, if the, if the signs were fifteen, that, I think that that would be much more apparent.
Counsel Leahy?
Sure. Um, I think the motion's well-intended, but, I mean, we have, the streets, the schools that we have marked and we have flashing lights at most of them, um, you know, people don't even slow down to go twenty. So, I don't know if the expense of changing everything to fifteen is gonna matter much. I think that, um, and, I don't know, we could, I'd rather find out if, my gripe has always been that we leave the signs on from nine in the morning until three in the afternoon. So, people just get used to the flashing light all day long and they don't stop. Um, I'd almost rather see the lights flash for two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon. Um, but, I mean, from going around and preparing for the facilities subcommittee coming up, um, you know, some of the schools just aren't properly marked. Beacon Street, um, the Bailey School, there's not proper mark signage over there. So, I think we need to take a look at the signage around the schools in the first place. Um, you know, we know people don't pay attention to it where the lights are flashing and maybe that's because they're on all day, maybe not. Um, but we definitely need, you know, again, some enforcement, which, again, takes resources away from another place. So, I don't know what the, what the solution really is, but, um, I'm really not in favor at this time of change of the speed limit from twenty to fifteen. I just think we have to enforce and properly allocate our resources.
Counsel Kennedy, then Counsel Cirillo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, I think this is a worthwhile motion. I think it's worthwhile to have the traffic engineer look into this and it could be that we should do this on a judiciously. In other words, I'm not sure that Draper Street needs a sign like that because it's a dead-end street, but that's where the Sullivan School is. On the other hand, we do have several schools in the, uh, city that are located on secondary highways. And maybe at least during, uh, periods of time when the school, when, when students are going to the school and also when they're leaving it in the afternoon, it might be a good idea to at least look at, at lowering it to fifteen miles per hour in, um, at, at those schools. Um, if other states are doing it, it doesn't mean that it's a bad idea. It means to me that it's an idea, at least worth taking a look at. So, um, I, I would be interested in seeing a report from the traffic engineer regarding this issue.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes, hi. And, thank you, Mayor. In Massachusetts, the speed limit by an ice cream truck is fifteen miles an hour. Did, did, I, and, um, so, gee, why is the speed limit fifteen miles an hour by an ice cream truck? It's because of child safety. Now, why do we have a speed limit at our schools at twen- twenty miles an hour when you're going by an ice cream truck for the safety of the children? It's fifteen miles an hour. Now, I feel that Lowell's children's safety is equally important at schools as they are standing at ice cream trucks. Thank you.
All right. Next, uh, by Counsel Cirillo, request city manager, proper department assess the amount of accumulated waste in the Jackson Street area since the new installation of waste receptacles. Second, by Counsel Kennedy, Counsel Cirillo?
Hi, yes, thank you. We did install some, uh, trash bins on Jackson Street, so thank you very much. But I did go to the Jamboree meeting and Jamboree did mention that the trash bins are getting full very quickly. And there is that term, if you build it, they were, they will come. And if you put out the trash bins, they will throw the trash in the receptacles. So, um, so if we could just have a study on, on maybe adding another trash receptacle there. And also, uh, while, while that was, that's being mentioned, I'm, I'm hearing about the, um, the trash receptacles in parks are getting filled up very quickly. So, maybe we could look into our parks and adding another trash receptacle because I feel that people are using them and they want to keep Lowell clean. And that's why they're getting, they're getting filled up so very quickly. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Counsel Millanazza?
Just quickly, on a related matter, Jackson Street, the city owns a piece of property on Jackson Street that goes over onto Middle Stech Street. And I was over in that area the other day and it's completely overgrown with, um, trees and weeds and grass. And I actually didn't think the city owned it till I asked, and a butler, and he said, "That's owned by the city. You should be embarrassed." And I said, "I will pass it on." It's a lot of trash, again, weeds, trees. Be more than happy to give you the exact address. Thank you.
All right. Next motion by Counsel Millanazza, request city manager, prepare a report on who's responsible for the upkeep of the grounds on all of our school buildings, including staffing levels by shift. Second, by Counsel Noonan.
Thank, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor. Um, as, I drove around the city over the summer. I was really taken with the lack of upkeep at our school buildings. Um, everything from grass overgrown to shrubs not being trimmed. And I didn't go specific school building by school building because I was president. I didn't want to get into a personnel issue that people didn't, weren't given an opportunity to come and speak if I was gonna mention a specific school. Uh, but again, I would look for this report to actually find out what the staffing levels are. There was one school where we had that storm in March where the tree limbs broke off and it wasn't until August that someone finally came and cut up the tree limbs. And they actually, when they did cut the grass, they cut the grass around the tree, tree limbs and never picked them up. It was really kind of bizarre. But in any event, um, I, I really think that it's an issue that we need to, uh, address across the city. So, that's why I brought the, uh, brought the motion forward. Thank you.
Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you. I think this is an excellent motion. I know that this has been taken up by the school committee in the past. Um, a lot of the schools that we have do not have a high level of curb appeal because they're not maintained the way they should be. And although it may not be a correct assumption, I think a lot of people assume that, that if the school doesn't look good on the outside, that there's not a lot going good on the inside. And so, um, it, it, it's important and it's something that comes up periodically, but, um, doesn't seem to get addressed. So, I think this is a really good motion to have.
All right. Thank you. Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. Um, again, with, when we have the facilities subcommittee meeting, this is an issue too where it goes back and forth, like who's responsible. So, example, this week at the Riley, there was some garbage at the dumpsters, but it's not school garbage, it's somebody dumped it. And then, you know, you have to make three calls to get someone over there to pick it up when the custodian should just be able to call whoever in the city and have it picked up. So, this is where we have to change our mindset on, um, you know, whose job it is to pick it up and just everybody cooperate and work together. Um, you know, we have tree limbs that are down and nobody wants to touch them. We have curbing that gets kicked up in the winter, which is still over by the Riley School, the Bailey School, the Stoklo school, that nobody thinks it's their job to pick it up. You know, we have to change our mindset, so. These are good motions.
Thank you. This is a very good motion. It's something that we struggle with when we get calls, whether it's about one particular school or another. The situation that you referred to, Counsel Leahy, you were the first one to call us and we did call DPW to get out there. But we did send out an email that, you know, someone at the school who's there every day has to call us and let us know, you know, if there's an issue. So, I, I think it's a communication thing, but we'll get you a report. But I agree, these schools, you know, do need to be well-maintained, not just, you know, for the, but for the students that are going there too.
Okay. Thank you. Next, by, all set, okay, by Counsel Noonan, request city manager, review and update any ordinances regarding parking of commercial vehicles on city streets and the neighborhoods.
Second.
By Counsel Cirillo?
Mr. Mayor, the motion speaks for itself. I'm waiting for a report from the manager.
Thank you. All right, next.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If there's no objection from Counsel Cirillo or anybody on the council, I, I wouldn't mind if the, the two motions were combined into one. It's, it's all kind of the same conversation, I guess.
I have no objection.
All right. That would be a, I'll read the both motions though. Next is by Counsel Kennedy, request city manager, reorganize the way in which cities addresses the deferred maintenance of school buildings in order to improve productivity and efficiency. Next, by Counsel Kennedy and Counsel Cirillo, request city manager, develop an action plan aimed at eliminating the deferred maintenance in all schools throughout the city. And the city manager, seek funding from the MSBA in order to implement the action plan. We don't need a second, so Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that all of us have received emails and I'm sure, Madam, um, Manager, you've received emails in the, in recent weeks regarding people who are complaining about the, uh, the, the condition of the schools or just wondering what we're doing about the condition of the schools. So, the, what this motion does is ask us to address that so that at least when people do, uh, bring up that issue, we'll have something to tell them. And I, I, and I do think that if people realize that there's a, that nothing's gonna happen overnight, but if there's a plan in place, um, and we're implementing that plan, that, you know, people for the most part are patients. So, to, to break down the motion into three parts, the first is to develop a plan, a maintenance plan that would address all of the maintenance issues at all of the schools throughout the city. Um, I, I think it's really important to have that and to have that out there and be public so that people can see, um, first of all, what we need to do, how much it's going to cost and how long it's likely to take. And then, secondly, I think that, that you need to take a look at the whole way that we do maintenance and the way that the city interacts with the school department regarding maintenance. Because I, I, from what I know of it, I, I find it to be very, very inefficient. Um, and so, I, I do think that we could be doing it a lot better. Maybe there are other cities that do it in a more efficient way or do it better than we do, but we, we don't do a good job on that, which is part of the reason, and only part of the reason, but nevertheless, part of the reason why we have work orders that number more than twelve hundred for jobs that, that go from major, uh, capital improvements on certain buildings down to, you know, broken, uh, window panes. Um, and those broken window panes, unless we do something about it, they're never gonna get fixed because they're never gonna rise up on the list to a point where they become a priority. And that's just one example. There's probably hundreds of examples on that list of items that need to be repaired that are not gonna be repaired just because they never become a priority. And then, finally, I think that in order to help finance some of this, we need to go to the MSBA. And you and I have been at MSBA meetings where we've seen that a lot of communities go down with individual projects, individual schools. Um, and we've been down there recently for the high school. But you can also go to the MSBA and request money for just, um, for repairs on certain buildings. And I think that we need to do that and that we should have a schedule to do that because my impression is that some communities are there all the time asking for money and they, they probably get it all the time as well. So, we should become one of those communities. So, I, I just think that this is really important. I think that, uh, none of us wanna have it be that when people are asking us about the schools, that we don't really have an answer. And right now, tonight, we don't really have an answer. So, and maybe this ties into Counsel Leahy's, um, subcommittee, but I do think that, um, I do think it's something that we need to address as soon as possible. Thank you.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes, um, I, I was second on this motion because it's so important. And also, we need to get back to a, a schedule of maintenance. So, once we are working towards these fixes, and I know we are, uh, we need to stick to that schedule of maintenance. And I think that that, moving forward, that is gonna help so much. Thank you.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. Um, yeah, this is a good motion and one that we hear about all the time. I, I know the school department, uh, sent over a list of, uh, top ten items in every school recently in response to one of the school committee members' motions. At the same time, we have our consultant, EMG, who has gone through all of the schools to look at it, particularly with regard to some of the things raised in the Collins Report, so that we can prioritize needs of the schools and put cost to those needs so we can come back to the council with a comprehensive plan. But with regard to the MSBA, Counsel, you're absolutely right. You know, there's been many years that we have not applied for relief from the MSBA assistance. And that includes roof, they have a program for new roofs on schools, they have a program for new, um, boilers for schools and a program for new windows that's separate and apart from brand-new schools or renovations. And so, we need to become much more proactive, looking at our lists and, and trying to seek funds wherever we can. So, we will get that full report to, to the council and work with the subcommittee as well.
Thank you.
Counsel Kennedy?
I, I think that the Collins Report was a great first step. I think it's really important that we had that done, but, um, now what's necessary is that we follow up on that report. And that report, that was an eighty-three-page report that was somewhat comprehensive, not, not, um, so I think it's important that we follow up on that.
Right. Thank you.
Counsel Millanazza?
If I could, as a follow-up, ask the city manager, the status of the heating system at the high school?
The heating system?
At the high school?
So, in, in terms of the, um...
New, new installation, working with that.
Yeah. So, the, the, as far as the gymnasium, the heat, heating system has been installed and I believe complete, uh, at this point. Yeah, they're, they're gonna be coming into, to balance, but the installation has happened. And we also have, uh, a contract out for the locker rooms and...
That's the one?
Yeah. That will be done, finished within a couple of weeks. But the main part that we were dealing with in terms of the gymnasium is, is, uh, has been installed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Our next announcements?
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo, then Counsel Mercia?
Yes, um, I just would like to recognize Steve Benoit from DPW and all of his work at the annual back-to-school bike safety rodeo. Uh, there were hundreds of families there, uh, and, and, um, sixty-six bicycles that were donated from partners throughout the city. And this was a, this was a Lowell General Hospital event. And it was absolutely wonderful and, and Steve Benoit really stepped up and did a fantastic job, uh, helping out in, with this event. And it was big and everything in the event was free. Uh, the children received bicycle helmets for free, pizza was free, there was a, a course on, on showing children how to, how to, uh, ride safely and, I, I mean, the whole event was, it was fantastic. And, and I just wanted to recognize Steve Benoit for doing such a fantastic job. Thank you.
Counsel Mercia? Then Counsel Elliott?
Thank you. I might say that Steve Benoit is a city DPW worker who does a tremendous job with whatever he does. So, I'm happy that you said that. That's nice. I have an announcement from the Lowell Fire Department in conjunction with Larry Finn, coats from Ann Above. It's that time of year again, they're having a coat drive this Thursday, September twenty-seventh, at Cobblestone's Restaurant, from seven to eleven. Bring them a winter coat and they will buy you a beverage. Thank you.
Counsel Elliott?
Um, I just wanted to report, uh, the Animal Advisory Commission, we continue to meet and we'd like to come, the, the Advisory Commission would like to come to the city council meeting next week or the following week just to make a presentation on a grant that the MSPCA, um, received to provide outreach and assistance and funding for spay and neuter. And, um, they're gonna, there's a pilot program they'd like to, um, we'd like to start in the Acre and the Seneble neighborhood to go to those homes. Um, you know, this is in conjunction with some of the problems we've had with dangerous dogs and to do some outreach, um, in these neighborhoods. But before we did so, I thought it was important that, um, we come before the city council to let the people in the city know this is what we're doing when they're just gonna show up and knock on doors. But they're literally, it's, um, this has been done in Dorchester, uh, has met with great success. So, I think it's important that we, um, that we come forward and, um, present that information. And secondly, I know that I've been approached, um, this summer there, uh, the Lowell Humane Society has a, excuse me, trap, neuter and release, TRC, uh, TCR, um, going on in the city. Believe it or not, there are thousands of feral cats throughout the city, cat colonies. And I did receive a complaint that the Humane Society did, um, they did trap, neuter and release because there's, there's so many cats. And they're, again, they're feral cats, um, but they have literally spayed and neutered, um, hundreds and hundreds of cats throughout the city. So, I thought that was important to bring that forward. The Humane Society, who is a member of the advisory committee, is going to, um, present information on that. on that as well, as well as this program of doing outreach. But there's a forty-one thousand dollar grant that the MSPCA applied for and they plan to, using it to, to address some of the issues in the city. So they will come with that. I meant to bring it up under reports because this is a, it is a governing body, a city body, and they publicly advertise meetings, so that's, we'll come forward with that information.
Any further announcements? Motion adjourned?
So.
By Councilor Kennedy, second by Councilor Mercier.